We'll open the planning board meeting for June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. Uh, if anybody's recording that is fine, you can let us know. Okay. Uh, we will be recording it and we will be putting it on our website for we want to you and listen. Um, seven o'clock P M town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of items to update the board on since our last meeting. I had a chance to meet uh with the owner of Sunny's Convenience over in the north side of Town College Highway. Who wanted to discuss and explore opportunities for for mixed use permitting and development at that site or retaining uh the existing convenience and uh station operation. I can say that a little louder. I met with the owner of Sunny's Convenience in the north side of town, looking at permitting um and design considerations for mixed use development at that property. Uh, it's fair to say that the site is limited on acreage, but I did underscore the importance uh that the board observed most recently over country out of sales where we were looking to have some protection and some separation between the users. So protection of that residential use versus the existing and continuing commercial uh component. The other item I wish to share with you is that uh with Mr. Comey's presentation uh this evening, that draws essentially to closer towards the closing uh part our work under a planning assistance grant from from two years ago. Most of it's uh supported the second phase of the master plan. Yeah, there's this remaining component that we pivoted towards examining our zoning bylaws that kind of discussed this evening. Uh, but with that drawing to a close, I submitted uh to the once the community one stop for growth portal for planning assistance in essentially the next step. So taking recommendations of well, a lot of our adopted, community adopted documents, including the master plan uh taking the recommendations that will come from uh Ken's zoning diagnostic effort and pushing that forward into action items for future town meeting warrants. So by law modifications and uh associated subdivision regulation changes. So we'll see where that comes uh that we're not going to get answers on that. I think we still will fall. But hopefully we uh receive some support for that and continue this uh really fruitful process that we've done, we've searched. So I'll have to say.
Seven oh five public comment. Anybody have anything for us tonight that is not on the agenda? Being none. Okay. Seven ten. Yeah. Discussion Noble Steed Crossing Construction Update. Jesse, how are you tonight?
Good. How are you doing?
What's your matter?
I have a couple. Um, I just wanted to come in and kind of go over basically an update from uh back in in February when we from uh like I last met in person with you guys. Um, I've stayed uh in biweekly contact uh with Randy and John um at the D P W office going you know, updating them every single, every other uh week uh with our progress and work that we've been completing onsite and staying as close to the schedule as we could um with um, you know, uh certain constraints with the conservation and um uh certain um permitting things that they are requiring us to do now that but we're working through all that stuff. I've retained Jeff Smith and Steve Salvini and Terry Reynolds. And that that's kind of where we're at with the crossing. Um, we're working through that right now to um because we're required to do a four oh one permitting through D E P now. Um, so we're working through that process to do that section of it. But in the meantime, um we've got in uh um the go ahead from conservation, basically a a good faith enforcement order from them to continue working uh to complete the drainage and that's in those sections. And this worksheet that I provide you guys with today, basically from our last meeting um and from when we started uh items one through six are what we've completed um uh to to date, which was last last Tuesday's meeting that I had with John and Randy. And um then I updated with new dates based on those new dates are based off of the on the concom um and the mass D P four oh one permitting process that we're currently going through right now. So I just want to bring you guys up to speed and, you know, I know John's been probably updating you guys, but at least you can hear it from me as well. To what I what I said I was gonna do when I was back in here in February, so.
And right, so just looking at this. Water quality base number five is what you're working on right now.
Uh, yes, that's correct. Uh, it's not in A, B, and C is not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what you're working on now.
Yep. Yep, and we've notified the residents uh in in planning and D D P W with a letter that we're working within that easement. So everybody's been notified.
All right, anything on the board?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Hey, one of you uh meeting minutes? Yeah. I'll I'll keep looking at my computer first.
Uh, okay.
Um, we have some light assistance. I'm sorry.
Chair, I'm looking for stuff to fill time.
So uh it's a fair thing to bring up uh now that if you will be town meeting and elections that you there was have come and gone, I believe we are at the juncture to reorganize planning board. It's an internal conversation. If you wish to the do the next meeting if you wish to. Not here. Uh, that's why everybody will get the name. So. Um.
Well, let's start, start. I know my my door to get your second.
All right, sure.
I guess we'll do a roll call note. I will stand. Dave's been high.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor and I.
Okay.
Making motion. Good point. Dave speeding this place chair.
I will second that. Roll call vote like a dirty eye.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor and I.
Okay. Um. Our question is the what we see you're the one who brought this up.
Do we go to say secretary and?
No, no, no. Who's on what? Who's on? I will happily nominate Dave Sutton. Right, Dave Sutton, being out to the two uh the uh planning board represents the C P C.
Second.
I'll be a roll call vote like a dirty eye.
Dave's been abstained.
I guess, David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor and I.
All right, um. That's all I'm.
Thank you, Leslie.
What do we got?
D B C.
D B C, who is Jessica, right?
Yep.
I will nominate that in a little second. We're roll called vote like the dirty eye.
Dave's been high.
I guess nine.
There's a sudden I.
Jessica Thornton abstained.
Okay. Um. I think that's all.
It's all I wish to uh connect this evening.
All right. Seven fifty in public hearing continued for Oakbridge State that more mining road and its subdivision plan and stormwater management permit application.
Please, please.
How are you this evening?
I'm good. Would you need any help to do that?
I know. If I could get a quorum and not feel like that, I wouldn't have to worry about so.
One assault only.
But uh Steve Sullivan, he's having these issues. And we are here for more mining road. Administratively, we will give you the the question for an extent thing that you need as a planning board.
Appreciate that.
Yep. Virtually speaking, upstairs days from June seventh ninth. Uh, June seven.
So we're gonna have to another.
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
No, actually, yeah.
We're through. This brings us to roughly the end of July.
Okay, so we're through the next week.
Yes, okay, sure, yeah.
All right, many.
Thank you.
See you later. We've got it wrapped up by the but okay. Let's keep that on that and it would be both get something else. All right.
Um, so essentially we've heard pretty much everything. We had three issues or not issues, but three three things to talk about. One was the uh the mailboxes. There's two mailboxes, one at the south entrance, one at the northern one. And Terry Reynolds has a detail, excuse me, a detail of that showing the turnout for like approximately a forty foot turnout. So you can stack two cars while they get their mail. And that's on one of the one of the sheets that I sent to you, John. The other one was the uh phasing. We've redone the phasing so that we have phase one, phase two. As they were, phase three will now come across and continue out back out to more vining so that the as the phase comes along, the third phase will finish the road coming out. So that you're not stuck with it. Long terminated. And then phase four would be the other portion of uh of right.
Yeah, there's only going to be one way in and out, one way in and out until phase three is complete.
Well, yeah, it's we're gonna you're good. We're gonna have a temporary turnaround. I was getting to the next. It it jumped me a little bit. The uh the next one is the uh the cistern. All right, so the cistern has been cited with Terry Reynolds and fire chief, I guess. Come to an agreement as to where it's going to be located. It's located such that it'll be on the backside of Vera Lane. So it can service the whole subdivision. Um, and what we will do is for phase one, he was going to build the road and come up to the cistern and put a temporary cul-de-sac in. So that you can come up and turn around if you need emergency equipment can get in, turn around and do what they have to do.
Can you show us on that just?
Sure. So. Phase one is right here. Phase two comes up. Wraps around stellar. Phase three then comes in here, out, down, round, and back up. And phase four is this section over here. Your sister is going to be between uh lots over to me.
Is it on the?
Pointer? Where the pointer is?
Anyway, second call, yeah. Got you backed up. Right, and so the uh turnaround will be right in here so that everybody comes in. You also have these would be built at that point too. So you're really only going to have this portion that would be unbilled.
Who's the mailbox gonna be?
Uh, one mailbox is going to be right here with a turnout for it. And then the other one is over here. So then the construction is going to start down this side. So this mailbox will be needed until phase three.
And that's two-way traffic.
So you're gonna have, you will not have anybody moving into phase one or phase two until the road is built to the cistern, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's I'm sure the fire chief would make that.
I just.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that takes care of the mailboxes, cistern, the turnaround. And then, like I said, phase three will continue all the way out. Um. And I think I think that satisfies what you guys were concerned about. The next is the open space. And we've talked about where we're at with the open space and the suggested formula is ten percent as you own. We're at eight point five six percent, one and a half percent lower than what we needed. But the difference with our open space concept is that it's actually a a usable. It's going to be located centrally and within the development. So the people within the development will actually be able to utilize it and enjoy it. This one over here on the south side is the largest one. And then this is the other one that would be out of an access coming in over the drainage easement. And this portion here, so it's essentially located open air open space. So these folks here walking the dogs can walk around, they can meet with each other, they can socialize within here as opposed to having some wooded area that most most homeowners aren't going to go into. So we believe this is a more functional, usable open space area, even though it's just a little micro bit below your ten percent.
Who's gonna make any of these areas? H O A?
Yeah, yes.
Is it Alan?
Um. I would assume that becomes part of the because they're both part of the stormwater basins. So the the H O A is going to own those as well. And the basins are not going to be these ugly things. They're they're going to be seeded with different types of plants. So they'll be they'll contribute to the open air uh environment for the uh for the residents.
Is there a diagram of how your um sort of plan of how you're designing the open space? Their landscape planning plan for how that being done?
Um. No, actually. But it's.
And I don't know what exists there currently.
Right, well, the the back of here, you know.
You better remember this uh detention basin here, the detention basin here. This is all actually naturally open area well, and this is all this is in a natural state right as it is until we start putting in the detention basin. And so there's shrubs and everything else and the uh not forced attendance over by its natural state. This area is going to have some work. We're going to have a greenish uh connection coming into here. This will be open and this itself is not extremely what it is over. So we're not really intending on turning this into a lawn. It's open air. It could be, I suppose, if the homeowners want to do that.
There could be a sign saying like open space or a residential area or something.
Like on every other subdivision thing that has open space will be properly noted, yeah. Was being facetious.
I wasn't sure.
You weren't sure? I mean, as part of the uh conditional approval, you could request a landscape plan that shows what the open spaces are going to do.
So is it, is the eight point whatever percent yeah, coming from those two spots?
Yes, well, actually, there's a little bit actually over here. There's this third uh little detention basin here with this space right in there that is also.
But the only open spaces are where the detention basins are.
Correct.
And are detention basins going to be fenced in?
Um, no. You're not showing that.
If I may.
Can I speak to the basins?
I didn't know you were on there. Thank you.
Yeah, the they're they're bioretention basins, rain gardens. And so there'll be a basically a a wildflower meadow mix that's planted in them. Um, and so they they have a special media that's put into them that is designed specifically to enhance growth of that s- that sort of stuff. Um, and so these basins will will basically they'll be allowed to grow throughout the year. So you'll have like a meadow uh you know, wildflower meadow throughout the year. And then in the late fall, after everything goes to seed, that gets knocked down. Um, and so that it can come back up in the spring. Uh, it is a perennial mix and they'll continue. They may need some maintenance uh to get desired flowers in there perhaps. Um, that can be done with plugs uh following the first couple of years. Um, and that that'll be an ongoing process that would be up to the association to to do. Um, these basins, you know, we'll we'll need to have uh annual maintenance um. And so they they will not grow up into a little woodland area or anything like that. They are generally dry. They will they will fully drain within a day. Um, so that, you know, if people wanted to walk in there, they can. It's not an area that we would have machinery or anything like that because we don't want it compacted. Uh, but it it certainly will be an attractive area that people can, you know, spend spend time and and uh, you know, be out in the basically open air. So.
Are they level? Are they level with the remainder of that area? Or is it?
They are level within the basin. The basin bottom is level. Uh, the berms outside are are fairly minimal. They're they're, I believe, about three, maybe four feet at the tallest. Um. You know, it depends on on the area. You can you can see the grading. Um, the central one, I think, is four feet tall on the highest part.
So the willow will not be fenced in.
No, these will not be fenced. There's no need to fence them.
They're not deep. See, like I said, they're centrally located so people can actually use them as opposed to.
Well, yeah, I mean, I I guess theoretically, I'm not sure walking around in a fourth by hall is.
Well, that's just that's just part of it. That's not the whole thing. That's just that's just part of it. And it adds to the uh the the natural look of it with the with the rain garden. Look, it's and it's not going to be like Terry said, it's not going to be a pond. It's just a rain garden which will hold water for a day or two and then it dries out.
It the these will generally never never be full of water. They'll it they'll only be holding water on really large rain events.
Uh, the one you have up John, what one is that?
This is the grading. I had it. Don't touch it. This is the side grading. This is the limits of grading on this basis.
And maybe I miss, maybe this is just. This one seems to be showing a property where that or you would come off of the road to go to that detention.
There's a drainage easement there and the access to will be over the drainage easement. We did not include the drainage using the area.
And the wetland relocation replication area is not.
No, that's not part of it, right?
I guess just visually it's tough to see this eight percent, but maybe.
So second detention time, second off the original first road, does it go across the whole thing?
Say that again?
Are you talking about this one?
Yes.
Uh, the uh drainage easement here.
Right.
Will have the that's where the access to this will be.
Where's property line on the other end? Where's property line on the other end? It's on the road? Okay.
It's its own lot. And this lot is about seventy thousand square feet.
Okay.
They're they're not just small little.
So behind that is another lot behind it.
This is this is.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That that's what I'm saying, you know, what you gotta try to keep in mind is this, it's all small paper, but it's it's a seventy-six acre parcel with twenty-seven lots. So it's not being overburned by any means. It's a nice, it's a nice spot.
The open space, I mean uh, there's been discussions about who actually uses the open space in some of these subdivisions and most homeowners are content with their yard. They're not going to go out and we're draping out in the woods. You would, I would, but some other people probably won't go out in the woods. They're just going to stay in their yard. This scenario here gives them an area that's centrally located, easy to get to when they're out walking around. And I think this would actually get more intended use out of the open space concept than what some of the other things are in. Personally.
But I I mean, just correctly looking at that, at least half of that, I'd say, it's going to be the basin.
It but the you're picturing a basin with deep walls and coming in. This is a rain garden. It's 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 yes, it's a base and yes, it performs like a basin. But it's not going to be a pond. It's not going to be a.
But it's not like I understand and and it's the the question become, I mean, whether it being open space and being retained as open space in and of itself is good. That may be enough. But the idea that it's going to be usable to me doesn't seem when you when you're jumping to the it's going to be usable, that does not seem realistic to me when you're talking about. And again, it's not a basin that's ten feet deep, but it's still four feet deep filled with wildflowers. I don't think people are walking through and using that area that is a that is a detention basin. Or whatever you want to call it. I mean, I I just don't think it's being used.
For the purpose of these regulations, open spaces land is usable for passive or active recreation duties.
I and and so I'm not going to argue about what I'm I'm not saying that it doesn't necessarily meet the definition. I think that's we can talk about that. But what I'm saying is you're talking about it being usable. And I'm not sure I'm going down that path with you.
So there are subdivisions in town that have narrow strips of land that you're supposed to walk along to get to the open space area. Uh, is that usable? Is that any more usable than what we?
That also means that I that because someone somewhere along the line allowed that in a in a subdivision in town, we have to now do that going forward. And I don't buy that argument either.
Well, until the regulation changes. I mean, it's it's kind of a precedent.
Well, no.
I mean, you know. But but in reality, I if you seriously look at what this is as opposed to what some of these others this actually has more potential to ha- have actual people walking on it and enjoying it than a piece of woodland that nobody probably ever goes to. So the concept of open spaces for the use and enjoyment of one fashion, either passive or active. And this this is right in the center of the subdivision. And I really believe people would walk walk their dogs, walk around and get more use out of this.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Um. All right, um, any other changes that were?
Uh, no, not really, so.
Um. Any questions from the board?
Just just to be clear, the basins are not included in your eight percent. Is that accurate?
They are.
They are.
They are.
Not the wetland.
Not the wetlands or the wetland replication, but the basins are because they contribute to the open light and air and they're not going to be ugly holes in there. They're a rain garden, so they will have their own aesthetic value that will add to that.
Um, anything else? I can happen to have a comment if you guys want to think about something. Um.
What do you think?
Hmm?
You look like you're thinking.
Yeah, I am thinking.
Well, let me go to town officials and public unless you got something right now.
No, no, I'm just trying to trying to fathom it that, you know, you know, on one hand, you're telling us that it's going to have a a periodic time where there could be water in there. Um, you may stay for a day or two decides or may decide to leave early. Um, but you're counting that as an open space, which is basically a a low bank ditch um, with four feet of flowers in it and nobody's going to be cutting through that and playing and doing anything passively recreational in it. Um.
They could sit and enjoy it.
Yeah, you know, it's 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 that's a that's a real fine line.
Yeah, and and I mean.
I'm not really buying it.
And and it's, you mean, you talked about the precedent of things and I'm not sure I agree with that, but you're you're basically asking us to allow people to just there's detention bases become open space. I mean, that's sort of what we're being asked to do is to say you can just take all the detention base and areas and make those your open space and then you're good.
Your open space is for playground recreation. I don't know because it's the uh the the regulation says for playground or recreational purposes or for providing light and air. Providing light, it says or providing light in here, doesn't necessarily mean recreations. Go ahead, go ahead, Terry.
Steve, can you tell me wha- what is the, what is the, if you take out the basins, what do you end up with then?
Uh.
Three or four percent.
Um, it was seven point two nine percent. Which is I mean, ten percent is a suggested formula. It's not a you shall have ten percent. It's a suggestion. So without the basins, we're at seven point two nine percent, five and a half plus acres.
So those basins to to just put it into uh squared footage for me so that I can think of it that way. Uh, if you have it, if you don't, that's fine, but what's your your total eight point whatever percent, right?
Yeah.
It's how many square foot? Again, you don't know, you don't have, I mean, if you don't have it, don't, that's fine. I'm not asking you to do math here since I certainly wouldn't want to be asked to do math here. But I I just am trying to visualize it in my head. When I look at this plan, the idea that those detentions are only one point something percent of those that that doesn't sit, that doesn't quite visually look right to me, especially when you're taking out that wetlands area. Um, it just, I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying visually it doesn't look that way.
At five point five acres or seven point two six, you got two hundred and forty two thousand six hundred twenty nine square feet. Not counting the basins. You gotta remember, these are big lots. These are not, they look small on paper, but that's a seventy thousand square foot lot.
The middle lot.
Yeah. Those those aren't, those aren't tiny.
There's a seventy thousand square foot lot with the basin in the center there. How much of that square footage is that basin?
Uh.
Or how much is?
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I.
That's gotta be.
It's all.
Forty to fifty percent.
It's again, without the basins, we're at seven point three percent without the basins.
Uh, of your total, but what's if if it's seventy, if it's seventy thousand square feet for that lot?
Yep.
How many square feet is the basin, including the banks that come up to the door? It's going to be rough.
Uh, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
But but that was part of the.
That's all right. If you can check on it and get back to me, that's fine.
Is that calculation, is that open space calculation on one of these um plan documents?
Yeah.
Can you pull that up? I may not be in the detail that I want to.
Oh, maybe it wasn't, maybe it was in the uh in the comments.
No, I mean.
Yeah, I had it on the worksheet, but I didn't bring that with me and I I know it's on the larger.
Which is the larger.
The one is bigger than the other.
Uh, but. Overall, this is a good plan. Yeah, it's on.
That can be.
Is that the large one thing?
Yeah.
Basin plan, phase one, yeah.
This one. We have uh three point seven two acres of open space. I can't, that's, I don't know, that's too dirty.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's on the other one.
Fifteen thousand square feet.
So. Yes.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I've got that. I've got that middle basin at about eighteen thousand square feet to the top of the berm.
Eighteen thousand square feet for that burn, for that basin.
So, which. All right, so if I'm looking at this, I'm seeing you're counting the whole seventy five thousand square feet. And as one open space, you're counting three point seven two acres. Which is uh one fifty or so. So two twenty five. Then you have now the twenty five, so that's two fifty. Two hundred fifty thousand square feet.
Which is roughly where I'm which is I mean.
It is, and we don't have, but we don't have the size of the basin.
Uh, which basin? We just, Terry just said eighteen thousand square feet for the stormwater two basin.
Uh, I'm sorry, eighteen thousand for the the central one, Terry, is that right?
Yeah. Yep.
What about the others?
The other one. Bear with me a sec. The other one to the top of the berm is twenty seven and change.
There would be a phase one.
And then there's a third.
Yeah.
There is a third, much smaller one that that right where it says seventeen hundred square feet.
What's that?
There's a smaller one too. A third one.
Yes, smaller one.
Um, is that when it says seventeen hundred square feet there, is that?
The basin bottom.
Yeah, that's what I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Man, it'd be eighteen and twenty seven of those the entire entire area or the just the bottom?
No, that that's to the top of the berm.
Right.
So that's the bottom and and the inner slopes. The li- the little basin is about twenty eight hundred square feet. The wetland in that stormwater one uh lot, you know, you have to remember too, that's that's a long, narrow wetland, so it really doesn't uh eat up that much as a lot.
Right.
Um, it's also those to be not, you know, the the wetlands themselves are a, they're a wet meadow, so they're really only wet in the spring. Um, so like this, right now, everything's pretty, well, I don't know where it is right now with all the rain, but this time of year and into July, August, it's usually dried up.
One thing you count on about the weather, weather these days is you can't count on the weather these days.
Well, you.
Right, I mean, it 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 is a wetland. There's no, you know, it is what it is. But.
Yeah, it is, and it's accounted, and it's accounted for in the in those calculations.
All right. Um. Any other uh comments from the board?
What's that lot like? Is it, do you have a topographic image of that lot?
Uh, next seat.
Yeah, there's a, the existing conditions and it was part of.
I mean, that lot that you're proposing for open space, is that a flat lot or is it a bank? Is it a hill that you're putting a hotspot into or is it?
There, it's rolling. It's all walkable.
It's. Yeah.
It's it's not flat.
That that land out there is easy grade, easy walking. It's not, not going up a mountain or climate ledge.
Uh, any other board questions? Uh, any town official have any questions or comments?
Good afternoon. Evening. Um, just a couple of things on the systems. Uh, this has been an ongoing project and discussion that John and I have been having. Uh, probably since the beginning of the spring last year. And uh with this development coming up, kind of put a little bit more spotlight on it, so I met with John and also with Terry. For this project specifically, Terry did a nice show of laying out um exactly where the system was going to be, we had a little bit of back and forth on the size and its function within this community. And the guideline that we're putting together right now is based on National Park Protection Association's uh, chapter eleven forty one and eleven forty two. Um, NFPA historically um contradicts itself from one page to the next, so it's very hard to get a clear formula on what works. Okay, so that does give the authority having jurisdiction a little bit of leeway on what to do, so um, based on a couple of other professional industries and fellow colleagues, I think you can come up with a reasonable um by law, well, okay, we'll call the guideline now. Um, I would like very much for someday for this to be adopted by planning so that it's in for all the subdivisions and things like that. Uh, but going forward, we're using it based on some past practices that I want to call precedent, because in the past practices where any lot or uh development or subdivision with five lots or more would require a system, um, and that's certainly something that, you know, for obvious reasons, it could be in play. Um, this being a larger development, there was talk of what the capacity ultimately needed to be. I think we landed on the thirty thousand gallon single tanks, fire to glass on the ground uh with certain specifications that Terry's aware and John's aware are are accomplishable and and that, you know, will serve the purpose nicely. Um, the only major concern they have in this particular development is when we start to look at the phases and how everything comes together. So we talked specifically about that. What phase one would look like, um, just to kind of address your concern as well too about when does the permit? So the system goes in, it gets our approval and then a building permit could be issued, so subdivision permit is one thing, but the minute we start construction, and that's kind of the industry standard now, if the building is a commercial building, the minute the foundation is done and you start to come up on the ground, we would need to have a building permit and sprinkled or fire protection in place. In this case, it would be the system, so they want to put foundations in the ground, okay, but the minute they start to construct, so the minute pretty much the 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 holes in wood come up, come out, that's pretty much when we have to have that protection. Um, so the design that we've worked on is is certainly going to cover everything. The paving of the road is kind of something that's been in the back of my head since we met about what that really needs to look like in the maintenance, so our guideline doesn't address the maintenance specifically about the roadway and things like that, but there would need to be something that would say the developer would ultimately be responsible once the phases are started to maintain the road. The road would need to be large enough and in design width as well as turnarounds, but also in substrate to support fire apparatus. So a gravel road, let's say, really wouldn't do the job only because of the weather conditions that you all referred to, you know. It's one thing to have some rains in the summertime, it's another to have a lot of snow melt in March. And you just have roads that are unviable, you know, by heavy apparatus, so we just want to make sure that that's addressed and that's something that's built into whatever the subdivision permit looks like. Certainly working with Randy on a couple of other things in the past, we've talked a little bit about what that road would need to look like. Um, areas where the system itself is located, what the turnaround would need to look like, what the access to that would look like, and I think once the uh second phase is completed, the third phase, I guess, is when the road's gonna, you know, the move is created, that's ultimately the best. Uh, but again, whether or not that's paved with just a binder versus a finish coat or whatever else. Um, if there's, you know, pavement goes down and this utility work needs to be done, that's understandable. But that's my only concern moving forward is where we are with the phases, how this is paced out and what that road would look like as well as maintenance. Once the development is completed, um, some type of regulation in writing, somebody signs off that the homeowners association or their hired gun would be responsible to maintain the systems. Um, what the town doesn't want, what the fire department doesn't want is the responsibility to maintain the systems. Okay, because it's a, it's one thing to make sure there's water in it, it's another to make sure that it's functioning as design doesn't have fracture, doesn't have, you know, it just got, you know, a break in the pipe where we can't create a draft, we look at water out of the hydric supply, so on design, when we look at what the NFPA standard says and recommends for the design, what we're trying to uh apply in our guideline is great, but it does need to be maintained. And I just want to give you an example of how important this could be. When I was in Grand Fire, we had a subdivision that had an entire system and system put in place. It was uh either two or three concrete vessels on the ground, had a monitoring system with blue flashing light and all the bells and whistles. Homeowners Association thought it had been taken care of by the builder, the builder thought the homeowners association had taken over. The blue light flashed flashed for about seven months, then the bulb burnt out. The alarm system was supposed to be calling and alerting somebody, it was never connected and it was never filling. Because they assumed the fire department was going to fill it, and we told them at that time that that wasn't going to be the case. So we just want to prevent anything like that from happening, so there just needs to be that ultimate jurisdiction of who's who's responsible once the project's done and once we approve the the actual system installation itself so that it can be filled. Um, the fire department will certainly help in filling it the first time if that was a concern. Um, it's town water, that's what we'll be bringing there, it'd be clean town water. But after that, we just want to make sure that there's uh some something about, something in check to make sure that we something do.
And are there inspections on those?
So.
Sorry.
If there's monitoring in it, there really wouldn't need to be a requirement for inspections. Um, basically, if the vessel's holding water, you know, I said, how just added we testing it, which you don't want to do anyway. They have to make an assumption that it's fine, but if somebody notices that every three months, we gotta go and put ten thousand gallons of this thing, you know, obviously have a problem. Not like the protection for other underground vessels, so if you take a gas tank, let's say it's Chevilles. That has a video monitoring, an interstitial pressure space monitoring, and so it's called tech. These don't get into that. This is why we have a post indicator that tells us what the level is on it, and hopefully that's working as well too. But the best inspection literally is the pop of the living sand that's blowing in there. And because even the gas stations don't trust the analytics, they dip the dipstick and make sure it's the right amount that's in there, so something like that and so you can probably make a business out of it in the Northeast of just checking systems all day long, make sure they're holding water, but right now, that's a mineral. Another side drop, that's the draw. Um, so that's that's pretty much what I have. And I think that um we discuss an awful lot about this in a construction standpoint, I have no problems with what's been proposed and this particular development going forward, location is good, the size is good, and again, the only concern the major concern having be access to that as we face new construction.
I mean, in my head, it's the same issue with like open space and things like that, which is you're all advice on whether there's even going to be a homeowner association and whether they're gonna maintain it, and so you know, is there something that you would want built in in some way to allow either it's, you know, annual reporting that it's it's maintained or something, or at least ensure that when you, if you had the head out there, that there's so water there.
The only thing I can encourage, because it's a good question, but there really isn't. The only thing I can encourage, because it's a good question, but there really isn't anything in place right now. We're required to the building department that fire fire launch systems, the sprinkler systems be tested annually, and we get a report. So I think it would be probably prudent to do the same thing here, say, each, you know, each year, somebody's getting a report, and maybe something that the town requires. The others required a building calls and fire budgets, this is not the general available system. And we talked a lot about this, who actually owns the system, and it's a demographic. You know, does it become part of the property when the town adopts the road? Or, you know, we, I want to make it clear, the fire department doesn't want any responsibility for the maintenance of this, right, nor should the town. Because it's a big expense, and it's something that we're not letting it go, and it certainly is. Not something that, you know, we're even staffed to take care of, I suppose, you know. Maintain, there's not a lot of maintenance, but I don't want to have to be the one who has to go up there and shovel it every time it smokes.
All right, any other question?
Thank you.
All right, uh any other town officials have anything? Okay, um any uh public comments or questions? All right. Um. Last chance with the board. Okay, um. My thinking. With new information and new plans is to sort of leave it open in case a question pops up as we look at it over the next. Um, you know, before the next meeting, but the intention would be simply to. Um absent any thing popping up, close the meeting at the next one, but also in the meantime, prepare. A written decision so we can vote on it, discuss it and and vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay. Um yeah, um.
So. I I mean, I just, I in in frankly, it's for everybody's benefit, right, because if we have. If we think about the. These issues and have. Some suggestion to you, and if it's a. We can't really have that discussion if the. If the hearing is closed, so I just want.
No, I understand, no, I, you know, we were hoping to. Not kick this thing on the road again, but.
But it's 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 six of one, half dozen of the other, because. And, you know, we are going to be, whether we we are not voting on it tonight.
Yes.
One way or the other, right, because we we need to have a written decision in front of us that we're reading and voting.
Understood.
Uh that's that's sort of the. The advice of the council, uh uh and so. Uh, you know, it's it really doesn't matter as far as the vote. Um it's it's the plan is, and we've done this a number of times, the plan would be to. Grab something up in the meantime. You know, obviously, if something changes, we'd have to tweak the. With the decision, you know, um but we do that at the next meeting.
Sure, can I ask is to, is there only one hangup for everybody on this?
I mean, I, you know, there's. I I gotta go back and look at the waivers again, um and just make sure that I was okay with all of those, I haven't looked at those in a. In a little bit, um so. Um. Uh plus the open spaces. The biggest one, I mean, I do gotta think about. I mean, I like cutting, you know, phasing that the way it's done, but. I mean, how long is that? If if. This stops after phase two, how long of a road do you have? How long of a cul-de-sac do you now have?
Right.
I mean, it's still pretty significant.
Yes, but there would be two other cul-de-sacs. To turn around at, so you're actually. Your dead end little space would be the. The hang, the dangling participle, but you'd have two other. Cul-de-sacs there. That would. Facilitate.
Yeah, I think it's around by law, though, maybe still.
Uh I I'm just, yeah, but the intent is to build a thing, and if something goes sideways. At least it's not one continuous dead end half, you know, halfway around. So. But. I don't know, you make your decisions based on failure, I think you. Make your decisions based on what's presented and. And the uh. The viability of the project.
Agree with that, I think we actually have to consider. What happens and what the security is for.
Well, that part I get, but yeah.
Um and so, I mean, there's a real, there's a, there's at least a chance that. This could get developed and end up to be a very long cul-de-sac. That ends after phase two, I mean, that's 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 at least a possibility, I'm not saying it's a likely possibility, I'm just saying it's a possibility that we need to. And certainly run it back.
Yeah, yeah.
A very, very long uh cul-de-sac to a less long cul-de-sac, so um. It's just, I mean, there's a, there's, I don't know, in my mind, there's a few things I just need to. Go over and it straighten my head and. Um like I said, I think that's a good reason to leave it open because it allows. The interaction if there are some questions that might hang us up, rather than leave it up to us to. Impose the conditions and you can take them if you want them, or you can.
Yeah, understood, understood, yeah, so. Okay.
Um. All right, so. I would entertain a motion to continue this to. July fifteenth, sixteen, sixteen.
We have a seven cent appointment at the moment, but I stretch that to be. Continued for six sixty-two.
All right, so we'll put this at seven fifty, this is what we had that, yeah. Uh. Go ahead, motion to continue this to seven fifteen P M on. July sixteenth, Dave's being a sub move.
Take a second.
You're all called, like, already, I.
Dave's been high.
Take a senior, I.
David Sutton, I.
Just before, and I.
All right, enjoy your course.
Thanks.
As you like, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Derek. Yeah, I've got a good back off. Okay. Mister Camilla. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Uh we're at the discussion and consultant and fourth comprehensive zoning reviews by the TV.
And well, the board, good to see you all, so I wanted to let you know that we have made it to print. Um and I will be. Um handing over the master plan um to John probably by the end of the week, so. Yeah, I'm excited for that, um and excited for the town to have that to start working on implementation, right? Um so we're here to talk about the comprehensive byla- uh bylaw zoning review, and so what typically happens um. During this process is really taking a look at your bylaw. I will say that I love this stuff, so I I like marking things up and then making notes and circling things and flagging things for future reference. Um as John said. Typically, what follows after this review is. An opportunity to actually work on. Refining it, um you know, I think as you read through this document, identifying that the first. Strategy or first action here would be to reorganize and reform at the bio, um to some extent, I think that there's some um. Benefit to reorganizing for the purposes of um readability in the bylaw, um and so with that said. Uh the. Report here goes through um explaining what the process looks. Looks at and the criteria that I use and staff uses for evaluating and commenting on the zoning bylaw, bylaw structure and format. Ease of access and navigability, clarity of language and presentation, internal conflicts and inconsistencies. Obsolete or missing provisions, updates to implement recently completed plans, if any, you have your master plan. Provisions that need to be updated to conform with MGL chapter forty-eight and judicial decisions. And policy level updates to implement recent completed plans and town initiatives, like I said. Sometimes your community plans will offer actions and strategies to explore. Um if uh the planning board is taking the lead on any sort of zoning bylaw or map amendments, so. With that said, um the report follows to to address um those particular issues, like I said, um. The the master plan being adopted earlier this year. Identified some recommendations as to how to look at zoning um and maybe looking at your current zoning and seeing if there are any amendments to follow. Encouraging development of a more walkable and livable town center, town center was a component of the master plan. Uh allowing new housing options that are affordable and attractive to all ages and household configurations. Including making progress towards the mass general law chapter forty B goal of ten percent housing stock affordability. Evaluating the current zoning bylaw with an eye towards improving long-term economic viability and sustainability in town. That's kind of like your smart growth concepts, uh density where it makes sense, et cetera. Uh maintaining open space and natural resources, I think if you look at the um. Uh open space and natural resources section, there's a lot of um particular strategies in the master plan. With regards to ensuring that the OSRP, your open space recreational plan and some of those other. Plans where you identify parcels to acquire for open space and to preserve in perpetuity. Um are just, you know, maintained and and that those are um. Part of your thought process and creating safe and improved non-motorized transportation opportunities and transit options. So. With that said. I think um with an eye towards. Um making sure things are. Uh you're identifying opportunities for green infrastructure, um I know that in speaking with John, um the planning board received a report from. Um your consultant doing the MS four permitting, and there were some lid, uh low impact development and green infrastructure type. Strategies explored with that, sometimes communities will take that and. You know, align it with any other larger zoning bylaw amendments that are took occur during that time. Um presumably, that may be something that the board may want to take a look at if um you get to move forward. Um. So those those things related to. Um kind of the other moving pieces in town government with the access to the particular grants like green communities. Um and your MVP work, um sometimes they, you know, uh require some. Some adoption of some amended bylaws. Um I include, uh we include in this particular report how it conforms or how it relates to. The um regional land use plan, Valley Vision, so like I said, I'm a regional planner, but obviously, uh my experience has been. Um. In my, you know, mo- many years of planning as a municipal planner, so aware of the communities and their individual. Um approaches to how to look at development and preservation in their towns, however, I think with the extent that. Um you know, there are, there are issues that. The Commonwealth face as well as the region faces, that's um briefly discussed in Valley Vision, how we promote compact and mixed uses. Um so similar to, you know, maybe some of the ideas that were brought forward in the master plan. Um. So with the state zoning act. Chapter forty-eight, which all of you are familiar with, um as as a planning board. Um just taking a a look to see how your bylaw conforms to. What I call the section three, which is the exemptions, right, oftentimes. Um applicants will come before the board. Particularly agricultural exemptions, um that's not, that doesn't require zoning, I don't need a zoning approval for that, et cetera. Um so in addition to that, um I'm sure the board may have contemplated in the past things like. Religious uses, schools, um those particular types of uses which are protected under section three. Um taking a look at those exemptions and seeing how they're addressed in your zoning bylaw, I think the only thing that. Um. I drew my eyes to was specific to um. It's on page three, it's the last sentence, section four B one. Says that large scale raising of poultry, pigs, hogs, fur bearing, or other farm animals require a special permit. Along with section four E two implying that agricultural uses could need a special permit. So I think it's it's just a matter of how you administer that particular bylaw. Um if the, if you are requiring folks, depending on the size of their property, coming before the board for any sort of protection. Um or permitting process where you're requiring a special permit for the keeping of those particular animals. Uh many communities that I work with oftentimes address this, particularly if you're looking at. Properties that are less than five acres, two acres actually, um for like things like chickens. Um some towns have adopted chicken bylaws, but um taking a look, you know, depending on. And this is similar to the language that you see on your AG report. After you submit a bylaw, it's like. Make sure you work with town council to make, you know, that this is administered correctly. So presumably, the intent is, um you know, is you've met the intent based on the way that the bylaw is currently written, but it's just good to draw attention to that. Um I will say that this is a draft, so obviously, comments that come from you will finalize and and incorporate as appropriate. Um. And the zoning review meetings, um I typically include that because that may be part of the future conversation when we look at. Um if uh the town gets to work on actually looking at the bylaw and amending them, if that's something that comes forward. Um technical review, so again, as I've outlined in the the front of the document, um we took a look at the the zoning bylaw. Through these variants, various lenses, structure and format being one of them. We outlined that you, that the town has adopted a bylaw that has eight. Eight, seven um current articles. Um and you listed them there, um. I think one of the hardships in navigating your bylaw was um. The use regulations. I think that was probably the hardest one to navigate, if I recall, that was one eighty-five twenty-three. Um. I have it open. Uh. That was where you have. Section. Yeah, section four, where you have after one eighty-five dash twenty-three, which is your flexible residential development district. You ha- and you were going sequentially in number numerical order, and then you go to one eighty-five dash twenty-three point one. Wireless communication facilities, and then one twenty-five, one eighty-five twenty-three point two. You talk about your solar um in that particular bylaw, so it's just. You know, seeing, noticing that and seeing that that's an opportunity for the the board to take a look at. Um how to um, you know, create some sequence that makes sense and also allow for. Um future amendments, knowing that you've set now a standard and and your formatting. Um. With regards to non-conforming uses, um under article six. Which you currently have in general regulations, best practice has been in other communities is that it gets its own section. Um that's a suggestion, obviously, you're navigating those permits as you need to, um and, you know, the way it reads, it's right, it's fine. Um I think it's just a matter of where it appears. Um. One one comment that typically comes up with a lot of communities. Uh is the section of definitions and. You have a definition sections under article two, however. There are other bylaws which have definitions, so um you know, ensuring that they all live in one place. And creating a mechanism of what that looks like is probably beneficial just to. Send folks to the definitions if there are questions related to that. Um. And so um the suggestion on page five is um creating new. Uh articles. One through nine, which. Are specific to your purpose and authority, which um basically creates the power for the zoning bylaw districts, including your overlays. Use regulations, dimensional regulations, non-conforming uses and structures. General regulations, this is where you're going to have your site plan considerations in your criteria, special regulations where you may have. Um particular um. Things related to solar or um. Things that that may be covered in your overlays, uh your cannabis bylaw, uh administration enforcement. Um and definitions. Um I think when reviewing the districts, the only comment that I identified and. I will remove the um registered merit medical and recreation marijuana, I got some information from John regarding that the town recently passed that. Um so. Um removing that reference makes sense here. Um but one of the, I think. Things that I noticed with regards to. Um, but one of the, I think, things that I noticed with regards to. Um, this particular section is, is the last paragraph of that on page six, which is. Um, the adult entertainment district, so there is. You've identified that there is a district, but there's no map. Um, so the presumption is that typically you have some sort of boundary of where those are located. The byline notes that adult entertainment uses shall be prohibited in all zoning districts except the industrial restricted zone. And may be permitted in any said district only upon the grant of a special permit by the planning board. So. Um, industrial restricted zone, you know, is where you allow them. And if someone were to come before the board. You know, um, that's where you would allow them, but I think it's just. Uh, with regards to how it's presented as the adult entertainment district, I think the implication is that there may be a boundary or. Places in town where you may allow that. Um, with that said. I, um, one of the comments to bring forward is your table of uses. So you do, oh, you do spell out the uses that are allowed per each underlying zoning. Uh, the suggestion as I think as, um, I think all the communities that I have worked with have. Um, it's not, it's not, not unique. Um, I've been worked, I've worked with communities not in Massachusetts that have. Listed the uses under their their use districts, but I think it could be beneficial. To have what you may be familiar with is a matrix of the the various zoning districts and the various types of uses and the permitting mechanisms that. Would allow you to get those permitted. Um, so that I think is probably one of the. Um, the low hanging fruits, I I would say, is you already have listed uses under those particular districts. Putting them in a matrix makes things easier, I think, for navigating the Bible. Um, and that refers to that, um, on page six, when I talk about the navigation aids, um, the table of uses. Um, use of graphics can be found in dimensional regulations that can demonstrate how you measure items. Um, particularly if you have, um. Um, I've seen signs, I've seen, um, how you dictate where the lots begin and end. Um, there, I think there are graphic tools that you can put into the dimi- dimensional regulation section. And as well as flow charts, which, you know, can also be aligned with any rules and regulations that the the board may have. Uh, with regards to clarity and consistency. Um. Noted, the flexible residential development district. States that minor residential developments containing fewer than five acres of land may choose to pursue an F R D or conventional zoning. However, subsection E two states that the minimum land required for all flexible residential development shall be five acres. And that this requirement reply applies to all F R D projects. Um, and as I mentioned before, the enumeration of those particular, um. Wireless communication facilities and your solar bylaws just fell under a different newer numerical, uh. Format, um, after your F R D district. With regards to the procedures that the board employs when it's going, uh, going through a permitting process, working with your town planner. Uh, what is expected in the submission? What is the the board expecting? Um, how does the board dictate their decisions? Uh, are there a set of general conditions? I think those are all questions that arise and many boards treat them differently. Um, with regards to your current site plan review process, I think. Uh, understanding that you may have a uniform set of submit submission requirements and approval criteria applying in all districts, I think. The way that I've navigated them is based on the the by, the section of the bylaw that is applied particular to special regulations. There are different types of submissions, um, and that's okay. I think, I think it just could be clearer within a a general site plan. Um, section specifying the timeframes for review and decision per state law. And adding provisionar for preliminary site plan review as an option. Um, some communities do that. It's something that, um, for towns that don't have a planner. Uh, is an option. Um, boards sometimes will put on the agenda a discuss like discussion. With a presumed applicant. Um, and I know, I think boards have different perspectives on that, um, but with that said. That, you know, that is something that has been recommended and that, you know, there are, there are examples of it here in, um, the Pioneer Valley. Um.
It gets codified. I mean, it gets put into a bylaws as a process.
Correct.
Or, I mean, we do it informally at times.
Yeah.
Wants to discuss.
Yeah.
Projects, but.
And I think, yeah, and I think that can is probably the practice of most communities, but I know that there are communities that either. Can put a fee attached to it and a a paper trail attached to that. Um. Special permit procedure should be updated to express expressly require the planning board to make findings that. The use meets the general special permit criteria. Currently, some of this language is only in certain district sections. Include reference to statutory notice hearing and decision timeframes. Um, sometimes that's either in the bylaw or in a set of rules and regulations. And then, uh, revise section one eighty-five, this is like the minutia, one eighty-five dash eight to state that the period of time. After which a special permit will lapse will not include time required to pursue or wait the determination of an appeal. Um, variance procedures are not specified in the current bylaw. Other bylaws that I've worked with. Um, they do describe a variance procedure and what the powers of the zoning or appeals. Um, you know, I think many communities know what the variance procedures are based on forty-eight. Um, but whether or not it belongs in your bylaw, I think it's just a consideration. Um, the first bullet is another one that, um, we'll remove after speaking with John with regards to Airbnb. Um, and your short term rentals. Um, as I mentioned, uh, the table of uses are missing. Uses that are explicitly included as permitted uses in the zoning bylaw. Um, table of uses should be updated to include all of the uses along with the zoning districts, so doing this permit matrix. Um, which would describe the use, the zoning district that's allowed and the permitting mechanism to get to that approval. Um. So I included this because I think there are a lot of communities interacting with the AG's office with regards to solar and batteries. Um, it's like every community I'm seeing is like getting challenged by the AG's office. Um, with regards to permitting the, um. Uh, the solar and what I'll say is if you have the, if you've had their approval. It's when you're amending it that you may need to, you know, take a look at it, um, because that will reopen. You know, and they may have a different perspective. I don't know. Um, I think that's been the experience. Towns have oh reopened their solar bylaw to amend it to make them, to make them further restrictive. Um, and to some extent are prohibit batteries altogether. Batteries are in. Considered and allowed and make a simple, you cannot prohibit. Um. That's being challenged all over, um, the Pioneer Valley at the moment. Uh, so taking a look at large scale, um, PVs and batteries. Um, electric vehicle charging stations are not currently addressed in the bylaw. Um, some bylaws have adopted that. There are some model, um, bylaws that are that are out there. Um, with regards to missing topics, we include this as, these are what we're seeing in other communities. Um, a discussion, especially with regards to housing. Um, inclusionary zoning is a tool that some communities have adopted as well as. Village center zoning, which, you know, has been identified in your master plan as, um, to create and understand. You know, there may be areas of town where it could be denser. You create standards and criteria for development in those areas.
So let me just ask you quickly about that, if we did do that. I don't know how many years ago.
There was that report.
Well, we, we, we took it up at a public hearing and we're debating doing a town center district. And really what we came down to was that the mixed use was the biggest aspect of it. And what we considered to be the quote unquote district was basically the business restricted zone on College Highway. And so we just added. Mixed use to. The BR zone, which effectively covered what we wanted to tell. You know, village, you know.
Sure.
Center district to be.
Okay.
Um, you know, but I mean, in in part of it was also, we were starting to move away from having these overlay. If we were, I mean, they started ramp up and it's like, okay, we gotta pull back.
Yeah.
Cause there's too many of them. Um, so, you know, that was the other part of it is we can incorporate it into an existing district. Let's do that right then.
And I think that's, that's fair, and I think maybe this should be, um, refined a little bit to reflect. That the, there was an intent to create some sort of village center type zoning, however, maybe taking a look and seeing what's working. You know, what types of criteria need to be amended, um, so that, yeah, so that, you know, there, there could be that analysis of. How to make those particular results work better.
And it may still be that it, that it gets narrowed, like what the average district is, they get narrowed more than the.
And, yeah, and you can also have special permits versus, you know, change the types of uses that would be allowed in that zone. Um, especially if you want to just rely on a a regular use zone rather than an overlay, um. You know, maybe a mixed use building versus a multifamily building would be treated differently. Um, and those who could be codified eh as criteria. Um, so one of the other things that we do in the, um, zoning bylaw review is. A, a review of exclusionary zoning language. And, you know, this I think is reflected with, um, some of the the conversations with regards to accessibilities. Um, and for housing particularly, um. So the bylaw language was examined showing where and how exclusionary zoning concepts could have been codified. In looking at single family residential districts, the av- ability to develop multifamily residential units. Does the town make it easy? Uh, does it, you know, create difficulty, minimum lot sizes, restrictions to size and number of bedrooms and apartments? Ability to develop accessory dwelling units and parking requirements for new housing units. Um, so those are the particular. Bylaw components that we took a look at, um, reflecting on other towns that have changed their bylaw to create. Ease of permitting for housing particularly. Um. With regards to the ability to develop multifamily residential units, you know, stating here that. The town permits to family dwellings in all residential zoning districts, although the minimum lot size. Uh, for two family dwelling units is fifty percent larger than than the same requirement for single family dwellings. So understanding that, is there a way to to contemplate or think? Um, if maybe the town, you know, could consider. Uh, less, uh, you know, a smaller lot size for two family. Um, and what types of consideration and what types of criteria the town would be okay with adopting. Um. So, general purpose multifamily dwellings are only allowed in the R twenty A district with approval of a special permit. And multifamily dwellings exclusively for exclusively for the elderly and or handicapped are allowed in the R twenty G. Multifamily dwellings may not con- contain more than six, six dwelling units per acre. There is also a general maximum requirement of not more than twelve dwelling units in an apartment building. Um, so, you know, it's just understanding that those are in your current zoning bylaw and if housing production is. Something that the town is looking at, looking at those particular criteria for the of. Um, with regards to minimal lot size, you you are aware of your minimal sizes, so we just spell that out there. Um, restrictions to size and number of bedrooms in apartment. Uh, again, this is based on the language of your current zoning. Um, I think with the understanding that, um. There are requirements for sizes of of apartments may, uh, deter, um. Multifamily dwellings being built in town, um, ability to develop accessory dwelling units. I think when, I remember talking through this with the, in the zone and when we were talking about the master plan. Really I'm trying to understand the permitting mechanism, if there is any, um, for accessory dwelling units. Some towns have codified this, some towns have. Allowed the building department to figure that out. Um, I know every community is different, but understanding that. Um, creating a legal pathway that. Oftentimes includes the planning board as the entity that would review accessory dwelling units could be helpful. Um. With that said, um, if you're, if you're following the current. Uh, legislation, the, um, ability to develop accessory dwelling units is something in the. Current housing bond bill and that will be basically a permitted use for all community. Um, and then parking requirements, and I think towns often take a look at those from time to time, but obviously. The parking requirements can deter housing development depending on, um, how much you're parking or requiring, understanding that. Not everyone drives a car, um, and, you know, some communities really love their parking. That's okay. Um, so with recommendations, as I mentioned, um, reorganizing and reforming the bylaw per suggested outline in appendix A. So you see in appendix A, there is an outline of your current bylaw, which presumably could be. Um. Um, designed in a way that reflected this new outline. Um, updating the town's bylaw zoning, uh, table of uses, creating consistent site plan review standards across all of the zones. Uh, revising and or removing overly district that regulate allowed use of, I think, to some extent, like you were talking about. Your overlay districts and taking a look at them to really understand how currently they're being used, how. The town is allowing folks to use overlay districts could be, you know, helpful. Um, taking a look at the smart growth community checklist, as I mentioned, the regional land use plan. Offers, um, various tools for smart growth, infill development, um. You know, creating, uh, opportunities to open space residential development, taking a look at those particular bylaws. Codifying ADUs, um. Will reflect this number seven to say that, um, basically to take another look at your current business restricted zone, what you allow. Um, there could be an opportunity there to, um, refine that section to, uh, maybe, um, create some momentum. For development in the village center. Provide low impact development standards. Again, um, you know, the town has a current existing stormwater regulation bylaws. As, um, you all are aware, the MS four permit required the town to, um, provide opportunities for. Uh, regulatory amendments, um, and so I know that list exists because I'm familiar with a lot of other communities, the MS four communities. Or, um, get those. Um, taking a look at your subdivision rules and regulations, I know that John has, uh, suggested that. For your grants. And then this one I threw in there because oftentimes. Um, and you probably know better as far as your vistas, your scenic vistas, what that may, you know, how to protect them. Uh, does the town have scenic roads? I was trying to look quickly through. And does the planning board oversee a permitting process for that?
Uh.
As far as cutting trees, you do.
Uh, well, I think yes, with in conjunction with the tree ward.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, um, that is the draft report for the board. Um, if the board has any comments or suggestions to include, what typically happens is there are for some of these. Uh, zoning, um, changes, there are some, um, appendix items and materials that will include with the report. They're kind of just like model explanations, et cetera.
I think the most important thing, they can go since we need to, make sure that we current this by law are accessible. Uh.
Yeah, that is, yeah, that is a takeaway. You can't go on, I mean, I'm like, right, I can't go online. I'm just looking right on.
Only by telephone and for a personal service, do you know what? So we need to figure that, uh. And get that right.
Okay.
If I could just add, uh, one quick comment, um. And if the board sees fit to explore a little further, perhaps there's something I'll look for them here, um. Can you offer a fresh memory where we saw or discussed some of that language about open space? Uh, subdivisions. In some cases, he's moving towards making that the five lights, if you will, option.
Mm-hmm.
And that, uh, you know, we were talking about the subdivision, there's a conventional one for us, and I think that perhaps was a. Point of least consideration, but the board became aware of when that application came forward. The idea is to try to encourage. The open space subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so. If the board's, uh, suspect or raise or doesn't. Or call it discussion at all, then, then so be it. I wanna just raise it right now, this is part of this, so uh we'd have an opportunity to turn that, that discussion.
I think that's great, a great idea. I think a lot of communities are looking that as, looking at that as trying to. Figure out how to get developers, if they're still. Developing subdivisions, how to develop it in that way. Um, P P C provided, uh, uh, did a model um by law back in twenty twenty one. Um, the town of Hatfield is currently adopted it, so I'm waiting to see what the AD's office says regarding that.
Okay.
Um, but. Yeah, so they adopted it. Um, the P C C model. For that, and I'm happy to share that, and that, I think that's useful tool in the way.
Good, I'm sure the time.
Yeah.
Anything from the board, so we. Also feel that I spoke.
You too. It's been lovely to work with the board, and I hope that we have an opportunity to have.
We're gonna need a lot of help doing all this homework.
Alright. Uh. Files.
Yeah, I'm sure. How that's looking. Uh, two fifteen college highway. Okay. Application for two fifteen college highway was to replace existing signage at the CBS pharmacy. Um, this is a wholesale replacement. Uh, fundamentally, we are seeing some minor logo changes. The idea is that we're looking at. Not only a net decrease in the square footage of the signage uh at this property. Uh, but also removal in some cases, so I think one of these uh indications for photo services, which is no longer promoted. It's probably a loss leader thing, right? Um. But uh, let's just, we'll sure, I'll show you uh what they propose. You know, all generally familiar. Uh, over at the drive thru. They're going from these individual letters um to, if you will, a single panel. Uh, but it was confirmed for me that light only emanates from the letters themselves. So while that's where footage figure has to measure at the panel itself. Uh, essentially that aluminum there, I would call it a wash one for the other. Uh. On the original approval sign. Signing approval for. This development eh was noted that. Signing was approved with the exception of the three standing sign from pending action um with the board of appeals. I did look to see if anything was on record. Um, whether recorded variance uh through land court or um the county didn't find it, I've asked for it. Uh, having said that much, I'm not sure fundamentally what happened back in two thousand nine. Or if they simply moved things a little bit and didn't get the top of the plan straight five. Things were constructed. Um. So I only. Mention that now because the next John or the next guy working for point sciences will run, someone will run up against us in the future. I've asked for a. Some clarification on that point.
What, what, do we know what the variance request was? That was it over signage amount, the location of the sign?
It's not entirely clear. It's a little bit hard to discern from the, uh, from the. From the file, on the signed uh. Plane. So, having said all that. Um.
Yeah, I assume the variance was for the structure and that.
You, you would think so. We're, we are working. I thought it was signed. Well, what makes this thing that they can. Grant for the square footage of the sign area itself?
I don't know the answer to that.
It's tough, it'd be hard to.
That's not a setback that they would fall necessarily for restrictions.
I think at a merit um issue, they could. Uh, if it was sought, now this is prior to the, uh, our current. Time. For your, our, our flow chart, uh, and by law was rewritten in two thousand twelve. Uh, so fortunately, the parameters easily at my fingertips. Um. Don't spell out quite precisely what they were looking to achieve, and it's hard to tell if it was a, if it was a location, like to. State right of way. Or the sun's setting, so I, I, I say all that. In the end, this is replacement of existing signage. Um. Uh, look to the torch and indicate its blood.
And comply with them. Why should we?
In that the sign that is existing and it predates the current standards.
Yep.
And then can we have the ability to get.
They have the ability to maintain and reface, yes. Um, by a current standard, there is. There's excessive square footage, correct, designer.
Will sort of replace language. Okay. Um, any questions from the board?
No.
Okay, um. For a positive recommendation for the final place that two fifteen. Dave's been so moved.
You could sing a second.
We'll call out Michael Doherty, I, Dave's been I.
Take that, sing a right.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thornton, I.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, one more quick.
Easier to digest. Okay. The previous uh Sunday's. And location. Yeah, oh gosh, this is over at Delight Corner. I apologize for. Forgetting, even though I reminded myself today of the name of that plaza, but it's the plaza behind McDonald's, um, one unit in there. Uh, we've got in excess of. Twelve feet from grade to. The beginning of the roof. They're proposing and the. Width of the unit is twenty five feet. Rough figures, you go ten feet tall, twenty five feet wide. You allow ten percent of that twenty five square feet. They're at twenty eight or so, which is well within the allowable figure at that in excess of twelve height. Which I was out there measuring today. So, a lovely new roof sign this proposed.
And it needs all the requirements and the immediate requirements. Any questions from the board? Alright, um, right here, a motion for a positive recommendation for two oh eight college highway unit B.
Dave's been so moved.
Take that singer second.
You will vote Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been I.
Take that singer I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thornton, I.
Alright, thanks very much.
That means you. Seventy one. College Highway December. Yeah, we're just getting to sure. Hmm, we're just getting to.
Sure you're ready for that?
Please take your.
Uh, I can't. I will let you drive the bus on this. If you don't want, well. Um, no, I don't mind, I mean, we can.
Yeah, I don't know, we're just gonna do normal things.
So, um, why don't you scroll down, John, so we have that all up on the first page. Um.
We're all here, so we're scared by. Um. We're standing. But a voting note. You should get her name in lights.
Last revised in eight April?
Was it later than that? I will double check on this. I believe the last material is received on equal numbers. But we did not have on May ninth meeting. Uh. Thanks, somebody's on. So I think that was.
Okay, so maybe that was, maybe it was just the discussion of it was after that. Okay, got it. That makes sense. Okay. Alright, um, alright, anything to change on that?
There's space there on chapter one eighty five.
Space and. Oh, gosh.
You'd see, you have no idea how many people go there and chase that. Jumps right out of there.
It does.
It's great.
Yeah. Um, anything else on this page? Okay, go to page two. Done. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yep, no, you're good. Just, no, 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 just go, just go back up and, oh, the first part of five. Does anybody have any problem with the first two paragraphs there? So, yeah, just go down to the finding. Come on there. Ah. Any, um. Comment on the findings, either general or. Special permit criteria. Do you want to? That's enough. Perpetious. We're talking about that in a play. Open time. Um. I'm gonna pay that, it's true. Um. Yeah. Um, alright, anything with uh, uh, A, one through five? It was a pretty slow mode. Okay. Um. B one through. Four. Yeah, okay, so, and um, anybody have any? Issue. I guess I'd say it this way, anybody have any issue with the language in here who's? He's like, I, I'm, I'm not sure I agree with it, but I'm not necessarily voting for it, so I'm not gonna argue about what that's. What the language, I'm not sure if it changed, it's satisfied. Well, I think so, but does anybody have any? Who agrees with the sort of idea that, um, have any issue with the language that's up here?
Yeah.
Um, so what, uh, so we'll go on to five through. Whatever you can. Anyway, um, just the highlights on the page before, is that for a particular?
So, that's where language. Was rather specific to the proposal and. Really did architectural guidelines, I want to share everybody, these took a moment to digest.
Just wanna make sure that.
The cyan highlight here is a follow up to. The version. Read alongside Mr. Sina, I wanna make sure even if he was aware of the addition.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So. Thing.
Five through fifteen.
Five. Um. Anybody have any changes to five through fourteen? Everybody? Everybody good? Okay. With sixteen and seventeen there. Yeah, sixteen, sorry. Um, anything? On sixteen or seventeen? No. Okay. Keep going. Um. See, one through.
Nine.
Nine is.
Almost.
Eight, one through eight, eleven, one through eight. Anything? Sure. At nine and ten? Anybody have any issue with nine or ten?
No.
Go on to. Eleven through twenty four, eleven through twenty four.
We need to discuss the truck loading columns.
How can you do it?
You didn't.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Did we know? Is it in?
I just seen him here. And number twenty says football areas. This ain't time.
Uh. It's, I don't believe it's. Did you ever told it?
No, I just think during. Normal hour, they're not called normal hours, yes. I mean.
And then you put it for the next fact. I suppose we can just kinda talk about that, let's keep that. Then and then talk about it in terms of conditions, that's what we were done on.
Thank you.
Um.
Now you're doing.
Um. Alright, anybody have anything else? Through twenty four? Wow, oh. Through twenty five through twenty six. Through twenty five through twenty seven there. Get pretty. Forward. Hey, but I go to that, alright. Little bit is. Pretty. Complicated. With all the things, right, it's very much like plans. Right. Um. We got one and two there. Which are pretty. Straightforward. Three. Four. Five, all the same. It's typical. That's, I mean. Eight. Nine. And all. Standard. Um. So I'm not saying changes, but, uh, so eleven and twelve, why don't we hop down to eleven and five? Any changes with those?
Do we wanna have some sort of language that matches the applicant's proposal in regards to? Preserving and retaining the back piece as undeveloped, not just. Not just that we're going to make it vegetated, but we're going to keep it that way. We're not gonna, in ten years, they're not gonna come back in and turn that meadow into a second building or whatever. Am I remembering that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Rob?
Yes.
We use the term itself.
Yes.
Declaration restriction.
Yes.
Uh, declare a restriction on the. Or shoe working space. It's big. Around the building.
To be incorporated in which, in hot water.
Um, they would declare a restriction on that portion's property.
Uh, so incorporated a D?
Uh, yeah, will be, yeah, so this could be, if there was a condition, we would add that recorded.
Well, have a special permit reported.
Yeah, but also be reviewed going through for declaration of restriction.
Okay, oh, fair enough, okay. Feel like a covenant, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, um.
That'd be the appropriate location, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I mean, it could just be a sentence at the end that basically says. The applicant show file. Uh. That's a phrase.
That was typically called, I, I, I got, how does that? Very different, a declaration of restriction is so much. But only some defining, um, that they can record it, I believe it's good for three, three years, but I've been told by other. Folks that. You know, the law, you think like yourself, uh, that whole conservation restriction that goes through, you know.
No, no, not a concept, I, I, I'm, I'm not thinking of conservation restriction that goes through, um, you know, yeah, like, uh, I'm thinking more of a. Almost like you would with a subdivision, right, have a covenant, have covenants that would apply and be. Be included in any deed, right?
It gets essentially the same thing, we have the template from the endangered species program and that hooks for folks that are. Developing portion of the property and required to, um, maintain a certain portion of the property, you know, in space.
So may, maybe we just put it this, maybe we'll just put, um, app, the applicant show file, a, um. A, a recorded. Well, advocate show file, or the official record. Um. A document restricting. Uh. The. Quote, vegetated open space to be permanent. In a manner, um, approved by town council or something like that, does that work? For everybody on the board, is that?
Yes.
Alright. That is probably my pay grade, so that's probably a town council. Alright. Anything else on eleven, fourteen, twelve? Just throw it all the way down? Sorry.
This is, this is prevent the applicant from deciding that they want to construct it without funding before us? Or? Just curious. Like it says here that we could ask them to do it if we find that the parking is problematic. But if.
It must be.
If we are, if anybody is basing their approval on the retention of this open space and the limitation of parking, do we? Have a mechanism that the developer then doesn't? Come back and decide, oh, we're gonna just pave it and not let us know, or?
That's a question.
I mean, is that a question?
That's great, I would say that if they wanted to construct it, they'd have to come back and report.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
There we go on this one there.
Hmm, oh, sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, I, I guess I read that a little bit in when it says if needed as determined by the planning board, right, I mean, I think that's the. It could be clear, I suppose, but that's where I.
Something for me.
Anything else? Okay. Um. We, uh, plus enough comment about the. Unloading times a little. Oh, thank you, you know, like, just runs, you know, it took about five minutes to go.
Is there proposed hours of operation anywhere in your position?
Um, I believe there was, but you have. Don't think they're. As far as the, uh, truck pickup events, I think whatever is allowed.
Student, isn't that the? Common complete, I mean.
So there is one, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, I don't know how it applies, I like to watch my work, but, um. But, uh.
I mean, here's the, I, I don't see any Dollar Generals or any other retailer, especially within our town. Opening prior to eight AM or closing after ten PM, I mean, right now, they're all closed by nine PM. Um, and most. Delivery, most truck drivers, and my brother works for Coca-Cola and. Would have to deliver here, so they, you know, they do that. Not before the store opens, and usually they are done delivering before, you know, rush hour traffic, you, you know, you do those. Smaller type deliveries typically throughout regular operating business hours, so.
And I think the business model here is that deliveries and stocking and all that occur within regular. Business hours, they cannot occur.
Right.
Outside of open hours, right, I mean, it's.
Things are real like that, they're normal business hours, but pretty sad, I mean, that's.
Right, so, so do you wanna establish this business as operating hours, or?
Well, you just mentioned a lot of work.
I, I would say that that is typical, but.
Whatever, whatever is normal business hours for. Yeah.
Fine, and you wanna spell that out?
I don't, it's better than others.
You, you frequent other retail locations, right, do you typically go shopping to retail prior to eight AM or after ten PM?
I don't think you're too ready to shop.
You can. Anybody else on the board with the authority to shop at their household cabinet?
Authority, that's the big word, actually. I mean, wife's approval.
Don't make me text Michelle.
Gonna take away my Amazon.
I, I mean, I'm not sure we've, we've necessarily put in hours for a business like this before, I'm not sure you do too.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I, I'm not sure it's gonna, there, there certainly could be businesses that. You put in the hours, I'm not sure this is.
No, just their normal business hours, so.
Yeah.
Fine.
No, I think that just functions outside of the special. Forces. Okay.
Anything else? We're not putting that, like, machine today, okay?
I do what?
Let me just let it go. No, I don't know. I've lost track of conversation, yeah, too.
What was that?
But.
I think it goes without saying, but if you would like to put something in there that. States deliveries should occur within normal operating business hours and. That prevents deliveries occurring outside crazy. Hours as well as perhaps will help to eliminate the concern about. Stock being left out and, and in the open and whatnot, so.
It's a guideline as well, it's a guideline move.
As trash, yeah, so.
Normal business hours.
Yeah, hours.
That'd be a thing.
I'm just gonna say that loud.
Yeah.
Yep.
Condition switching reads, our deliveries and trash removal services shot only take place during normal business hours.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh. Um. Anything else?
I understand what people wanna do. I like what they wanna do. But I don't really see more than one or two people from this town who came here. For the project, you see a lot of people proposed project. But nobody come in, rah rah, let's have it. And that's my concern, we're here. To support the people of town. And I personally think if. We vote this, all these people nowadays are voting against it. Not, but are speaking against it. Then they're telling us they don't want it, are we not listening?
Do you find it is only our job to listen to the public or to also follow the bylaws and write reasonable and legally defensible decisions?
Well, it also work for the public. Well, no, you're paying her out.
But that's a, that's a double edged.
They're voted us, then.
Just, just to play devil's advocate, that's a double edged sword, because they would say, well, where's the, the rest of town to show up that didn't want? I don't, you really can't say, you can't read into it, say, who did, who didn't come?
Okay. Okay, you got it.
Um. Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with Dick on that.
I still like it.
You know, um, but I mean, I guess my opinion hasn't. Changed from the beginning, which is. I don't. I see that area of college highway. As. Different in character, fundamentally different character than once you get to, say, Tannery. Um, and the types of businesses that are there, the sizes of the businesses. It's different to me.
True, Mike.
And.
I don't think the gentleman can hear you in the back.
I'm sorry, let me, I'm, I'm hiding over here and to make sure you can hear. Um, I can, I.
Hey, we're all there.
I, um, I just see it as, that's a different area. Of College Highway. Than once you get hit Tannery and you keep going, I just, I think in, in character, in size. Um, I don't, I. I know. There's been discussion about. You know. That there was zone changes for Winfield and zone changes for the American Inn. But at the same time, this piece of property was only acquired. Five or six years ago. And so, Ameri, you know, it's been there for twenty years, Winfield's been there for fifteen years, this, this property was purchased. Knowing. That's what surrounded it, so. I, that argument doesn't. Mean much to me, they knew what they were buying and, and what was surrounding it, so.
Did the condo association not know what they were buying when they developed on College Highway, the lone sole? Commercial. Street that we have that runs through town?
I, but.
If you wanna go with that argument?
Correct, and if it was simply one thing, maybe that would be the case, but that whole. Area. Has changed in the way it is, I mean, that whole area is. Essentially residential now.
Well, I, can I just disagree, because I, I knew that this argument was coming, so I, I just kind of Google mapped it and said, okay. Parcel by parcel, we go dentist office, whip city tool, five star transport. Two small, single family homes, a gas station, a car dealership. Um, small bit of open space, and I think the water. Station.
Yep.
It's. Small homes, Winfield Circle, Greens West, but then you have Rays, and you have the brewery, retail, retail, retail. Across the street, the Krensky Brothers, couple small family homes, but then you have the huge development of the villages, a doctor's office, the hash house. The already approved combo mixed-use business. Residential industrial development that's going there, and then you have our open space farm. We, we approved two buildings in the back that could be used for.
Yeah, industrial, but, yeah.
More intense, not, not, not business, not retailer, right, so more hard use.
Yeah.
Um, so. Uh, to say that the whole section is, and then, and then to say that below Tannery is somehow substantially different in that. Fact, the parcels may be smaller, but we still go. Business, 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 business. House, house, business house. Business, 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 business house. Business, business, business house, so are we, are we looking to turn College Highway or? Or even this? Board or section of it, again, understanding that we only have seven percent of available land in town for commercial usage. That our goal now is to turn this upper section residential and to eliminate some of our business zones?
But I think from, say. Uh. Uh, you know, South Lake Inter so. Up until Tannery. The number of. Continued residences in that period, in that area. Is probably less than the number of residences just on Winfield. And so you have Winfield with the size of Winfield, you have. I'm sure whatever the American Inn is called now, like, uh, the villages. Um, you have, I mean, that has subs, and you have the greens.
Here.
Actually increased. The amount of residential activity in that area, yes, it's not all residential, but. Surrounding this property has turned. Substantially residential. Um, even prior to when it was last per, when it was purchased by the owner. So I just, I think it is a different. Character. Um. And I think that is. You know. It, it's, it's just different to me, that area is different to me than what you get Tannery.
But, and so, because that. We were just talking about our master plan and the BR zone, and the intention is to increase our mixed use. So is it okay for mixed use? For these residents, but not okay for these residents? I don't know, especially when there's a mixed use development going in right across the street.
To me.
Residential and business together, that's what happens when you build on College Highway.
Right, but here's the difference to me is, and this is consistent with the master plan, which is that. The encouragement was for small, more local businesses. To be developed in this town.
And I think we have one, two, three.
And I think especially around residences, that is what. Would be more appropriate. Than something like this, which would belong to me, again, once you get past Tannery, would be more appropriate for something like this.
I don't think this parcel would be necessarily a small business slash startup. Type of parcel, unless we continue denying things on it for the next twenty to thirty years, and then it's gonna be worth a lot less, um.
I don't mean for, yeah.
But also. We have a number of. Small business locations with, between Gillette Corner, between the others there next to Mobile, we have. Small business units that we consistently see people moving in or moving out, some people that have been there for a long time, this parcel is. Has been sitting here looking for the right development, and many, many developments of different types have come before it. That. Were opposed. By the residents that didn't appeal. On a number of different levels or weren't able to come to fruition because of the lack of funds. And now we have an application that for all extensive purposes meets. All the other requirements except for this nebulous character argument, which we just heard. From the PVC, PVC representative that we're not going forward, we should probably try to look to eliminate. That sort of nebulous based decisions. And is that something that if you were to write this decision, if you and one other person agree with you? Is that a legal? Is that a legally defensible decision that you can write?
Absolutely, it also doesn't, I mean, the other part of it is. And, and Ken was just talking about it, is you have this, the design guidelines apply to this property. I mean, there's no, there's no. Ever to comply with the design guidelines with the parking and the structure with the. With the, the building design with, I mean, there's no attempts to.
We asked him to change the building design and we floated the idea about the parking and then. When challenged on it by the applicant on a couple of different. Angles, I think most of us did end up concurring because of the loss of space, because of location. And then frankly, as much as I. Understand the park behind aspect of a town center, um. When I'm driving down the road, if I can't see a place to park, I'm probably not going in.
Well, but then, then why do we have the design guidelines?
They're just guidelines.
Right, I, I mean. So. They, they.
When that guideline came out, there was a huge debate over that, and the biggest part was, was the substantial uptick in cost. Taking, you spin a building around, now you got decorated two sides of the building, because you don't wanna, you don't wanna put the garbage toward the street. So now they have to rehab the back of the building that nobody normally sees when it's facing the other way, that was, I remember that, I was here then. That was, that was a huge bone of contention. And, and there was some on that panel that was going on when that happened, that, that was, well, oh well, they had a building down to build a new one. Uh, but they are, they are guidelines.
They are guidelines, but.
Not a bylaw.
But. They're still guidelines, right, and so. I mean, if they're not in any way, if they're just ignored for each and every project that comes into town. They're utterly useless.
Saying it's bad or good, I'm just stipulating what it was when it happened.
The other part about it. To me. I'm not, I think they're more applicable, once you get past Tanner and you have sidewalks there and you have things where it would make more sense to have. Parking lots in the back. But again, that's the argument, it's different once you get to that area than it is. Back there.
So you can't use the lack of them not applying, applying the guidelines, right, that's. If you're not expecting them to adhere to them, but that's.
But that's flips around, you can't use the, well, they're the exact same thing. If you're saying that they shouldn't be, the design guidelines more applicable here, right, you can't have, you can't do both, and so. I agree with you, but if you're saying that the whole thing is the same, then to me. They need to comply with the design guidelines, something. Or at least make a good faith attempt to. Reasonable to put parking in the back or to do, and by the way, it just don't, I mean. I, I. Rob knows that I have no issue with what he did, and I mean, I think he did a hell of a job. In sort of designing this and presenting this and, and took a lot of the. Discussion and comments into account and change things. Um, I have zero issue. With. Ninety-five percent of it, right, it is simply just the idea that I just. I see it differently in that area of. Of College Highway than I do once you get further along. And then, and nothing. I've sat and listened to, and with that focus and nothing has changed my. Feeling.
So I, I just. Is, would then there be any application that comes in, and I'm not asking you to create one out of your necks, we don't like that exercise. But if that's the viewpoint that you have. Is any commercial business or any retailer that comes in. Going to not match the. Character of the neighborhood that you established for it, for, in your mind, for yourself. That then we are in effect removing this, the zoning that this parcel particular.
New small business there, you know, it would, would. Residential on it, that, I mean, is that, there's nothing wrong with that there, that seemed like it would fit pretty. Nicely there, um, I mean, there's probably hundreds of different uses that could go in there and fit in. There, it's not solely residential in that area and it's a business restricted zone. I get that, but the fact that it's a business restricted zone doesn't mean you can put any business you want in it.
Right, but we are, but retail is one of the prescribed.
Okay, can you put a Walmart there?
What a Walmart in intensity of use in that parcel be providing the same amount, right, so we're, but we're, so. That's the intensity of use, right, is. We, we've had, we have other applications on our docket that take ten pounds of sand trying to shove them into a five pound bag. In this case, we have a five pound bag and the applicant has said, yo, I'm willing to only put a pound of sand in here and give you two extra. Pounds of sand that nobody can ever put anything else on here, I don't think another application. With a by right per special permitting guidelines. Use is going to offer us the level of protection and buffer that we are currently giving to the. Residential components of this neighborhood, and if we say no to this and another one comes in and fights us on it. And doesn't offer up these protections, I think it's gonna be a lot uglier, so I think this is actually pretty much the best application that we could get for this place.
Yeah, and I, I just said, I, and I can't, I don't. I'm, I have zero criticism over. The way it was designed and the way it was protected, I applaud that. But I just don't agree that that's. Proper place for this. I just don't, I mean, I haven't changed that one.
Can I, can I just ask, I know that this is a discussion amongst the board, what I'm, so, what I'm hearing is that there's philosophical. Concern related to the zoning. Everything I've heard. From, from the chair is not site specific, and you just said it, is not site specific, really. Is surprising to me. That with your knowledge. It seems to me that this is completely arbitrary. Zoning, big picture, and still big envisioned there. Versus. Standards being met. Some of these, uh, special permit standards being met. Literally having two of the last public hearings with no additional questions. Us agreeing to every, uh, every condition. I, I would be at a loss, I would literally be at a loss. At a time that I can spit this firmly. I get it, you know. You don't envision something in the north side of town, but that's not special permit criteria. That's only.
Yeah, but I just, I, I disagree with that idea, I disagree that. The fact that it's business restricted zone. Means. Every single parcel that is business restricted zone is exactly the same, has exactly the same criteria. Because they are all unique in where they are located, and you have to look at what. Abuts and what neighbors that those particular properties, you're not looking at. Uh, that BR zone. Property there and a BR zone property, you know, it, it. Down by, um, you know, the post office or down by, you know, I mean, they're not the same, they're not, they're not the same, they're not identical. You have to look at what's around that particular property and plus to have some degree of specificity to the property. By the bylaws. I mean, does, that's literally what it says, I. I think it's the first one in the special permit criteria, isn't it? Suitably located neighborhood in which is proposed, I mean, it's. And, and that's, I, I mean, that's, that you have to take into account the neighboring properties and, and that's. So you, you don't treat every single BR parcel as identical, it's just not the way. At least I read the. Bylaws, I think there is a difference, and to me, there's a difference.
So we have a site specific use. On a property that's zoned properly, you need all dimensional requirements.
Yep.
We have no traffic issues, we have no safety issues, we have mass DOT jurisdiction for those issues on the roadway. We have a buffer that is. Heads and shoulders above what's required, we have a restriction that we're proposing on such a property and. We have a hodge, arguably a hodgepodge of. Uses in the surrounding area, many of which are well over the retail square footage. Or the commercial square footage of that building, not to mention that the, some of these residential uses tower over. You know, if you look at the American. I mean, there's, there's, there's literally. There's no consistency in that neighborhood and business restricted, if you look site specific at any of, of these other sites. So with you, it's, you would, you probably couldn't make this work, I think this is, this. This works specifically on this site. I'm telling you, it's. If you're guys. Which you have every right to do, I'm sure they'll appeal it, and I'm, I'm telling you right now. You might as well change your zoning, and I said this, I said this at this meeting, just change your zoning. Because, because there's no point in having a special permit associated with a proposed use, because everybody that comes to town is gonna say. Like, we met all the rules, we met all the requirements. And then you have two members of the board that decide it's a. You know, it's a philosophical, I still feel it, and then you're done.
I, I mean, I, I just. So we should not take into account. The fact that there's residences next to us.
We take that into account, but we also take into account that the residence is built on College Highway. That, that there's, you can't have the expectation that I built a house on College Highway as the same level of expectation as I built my house on Lexington Circle.
Okay, right, so that, but. The person who purchases this property with all those residences around it.
So then if that, if that's the case, then when we as a board presented a zone change to town meeting. For spotting of this and a spot here to allow for residences, then this little parcel in between should have been changed over. And instead, what's happened is that these people and these people have imposed their will on this one particular parcel. And when we had the last zone change request for it, for a, it was a multiple family use zone. It was too expensive, we couldn't get it. Because it's a lot of money to hook up a residence use to. The commercial lines there on College Highway, why? Because it's meant to serve commercial businesses. I just, I. I, I don't think that the. With all the, the tally points that Rob mentioned, uh, that I were just echoes of my own. That. A legally defensible decision hedging on the. Character argument of the neighborhood, when you've said that, well, you know, a different retailer might be better. Well, what kind of classism judgments are we making now on retailers that?
Maybe I'm, I'm talking about the.
It'd be, because that'd be whether you mean it or to or not, it comes, well, this is a lower quality retailer that I just don't think fits this neighborhood. Whereas another retailer might.
I, I haven't said anything like that. And you don't have to say.
You don't think that that it comes across that way?
I don't care how it comes.
Well, I'm trying to understand your argument and, and feel it out with you, because if somebody else votes with you, I'm not gonna be the one writing the denial decision. You know.
So. I guess. At some. Points, and this is, I think. These. Primary parts and then a lot of what Ken said here tonight. Which is. It's if you want. To. Preserve areas or make areas into. Something. You need at some point to start enforcing. To have long term change. At some point you do. And so. If you start, if we're, you're just gonna put in. Any kind of business. As long as it meets the, the zoning requirements. All the way down College Highway up until you get Western. And you're gonna, they, they are all on until you get to, I mean, I forget where it's not, they, almost all of them are. So you're gonna put in any. You know, ten thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand square foot property or building. That could fit on those and have a little bit of. Leeway in the back. All the way down to the western line, it's if they wanna sell. You know. Whip City Tool, they wanna sell, you know, um, whatever else down there. And change it over something else, who cares, we don't care what that looks like.
Well, I, I don't think that's fair either, because we've been pretty hard pressed on making sure that. It did look different and that there was. Both open space of a buffer. And defense and. Vegetative restoration, I. Yeah, I think we did take that. Site specific into account and. Yeah.
I mean, I think the fundamental difference of opinion sounds like, you know, what we're talking about is that you're thinking, hey. Businesses in general, this, it's overly residential down there, it should be more.
It should be, it should be small business, it should be mixed use, there's certain types of. Of commercial. Uh, proposals that I think would be appropriate. On that one particular parcel, which is now surrounded by.
Residents, in my mind, I think. Small business. Is not necessarily owned by. Uh, you know, some resident in town. It's more of the scale of the operation. And granted, this is a corporation, but the actual operation that's on this parcel. If it weren't owned by a corporation, I think it's a mom and pop. Kind of, it could easily be a mom and pop convenience store. Just the fact that it happens to have a corporate parent. I don't see much of any difference there.
Since this gentleman was able to speak.
Now, we're, we're not gonna, we're not, this is not, because none of this was. Was, is evidence. About, you know, for us to take into account, I mean, I do. So. If you have something to talk about with the specific bylaws, which is why I think I, I, I sort of let Rob. Talk about the specific zoning district and bylaws, because I think that helped with our discussion here. I, I don't mind that, but it's just simply a, you know, we don't agree with this going in there. That's evidence that we really can't take into account at this point in time.
Thank you very much.
I'm George Patassol, thirty-eight, one second, sir. Now, I just wanna mention the fact that. I just wanna mention the fact. There are, I don't know the exact number, but there's probably around two hundred and fifty residences. Residences within walking distance.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, so that's fine, yeah. No, and that's fine, I mean, like I said, if we're talking about bylaws specifically and that's. No, I understand, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. I, I don't. So. I, I guess.
Well, that is fundamental philosophy. Difference or whatever, but I mean, just, are businesses inter-spirited without, within all the residences in that whole area?
Correct, and for the most part, they are. Smaller. You know, what you'd expect. Quote unquote, local business of, that you may need in that, in a smaller.
I guess, I, I draw a distinction in. The local part, but I look at the scale. Overall use, size of building, so efforts are meant to make the architecture and everything, the buffers, everything to try to make it as harmonious as possible within the area. Everything. I think could be done.
Yeah, I just. I don't, I don't agree, I just don't. Yeah, I, I can't say enough, I, I, I think. The efforts have been. Um. You know, well appreciated, but I just like. It could change the way that I look at. That area of college. Just how. And it's, I mean. I don't see how you don't. Let. Any one of those residences, which is in a business restricted, you know, um, or. Business restricted parcels there, turn into whatever. Business they want all the way down to the western line, and to me, that's not that character of that area, I, I don't know.
I mean, from Westfield, it literally goes a dentist office, whip city tool, five star transport. Two small family homes, which on Google Earth it looked like one of them might be for sale, uh, a gas station and then a car dealership that. Is calling John asking to become mixed use, so. Again, it's commercial, 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 and then, yes, we do have a multiple number of residences, but these are also multi-unit residences. And multi-unit residence complexes, whether they're apartment complexes, condos of. Regular cost or higher cost condos, or even over a certain age limit, those are usually found. Adjacent to business areas. And whether or not it's, it's currently a safety, uh. Thing that we can provide or that mass DOT wants to do and about, you know, with walking and sidewalks. I mean, they don't want it anyway, so.
Single retail establishment over there?
No, other than the convenience store attached to the gas station. Other than the, right, so, other than the proposed ones that we've already approved.
Not attached to that gas station.
Right? And 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 Web City Tool, I mean, it's, it looks small from the front, but it's a big building. It's a big box.
And every single one that you've named there, I believe, has been there before the bylaws. They've been there for years and years. And five star transportation.
And so and so then when somebody developed the zoning bylaws, and I'm not one to be beholden to people and stuff they wrote in nineteen sixty-five, but. This was identified as the area within this town that should provide for business opportunities and. So.
I don't agree that. If you meet the definition of business, you're allowed to go in there necessarily. That's and that's.
But it's not just allowed. It's, did you, did you a- agree to change your design? Did you add an additional buffer? Did you agree to slide the parking lot over to make sure that you don't interrupt? The shoddy workmanship of stuff that happened on an adjacent parcel? Like. We asked for things and we've gotten those things. We didn't run up against a hard line. And the person hasn't come in and been like, well, we can do this because we can do this because we're a business and we're gonna do it. You know where I am, you know where you are. Can we vote?
We can.
Yeah. Anybody else got a problem with that?
Many thoughts and enough words.
You, I know, hard to believe.
Did John just explain to the board what they need the pass list?
Yeah, there's a quantity. So super majority of a five member board is four folks. It's what you're trying to.
I'll make a motion to approve the. The decision as uh written on.
I'll second it.
Do a roll call. Oh, Michael, go ready now. Dave Spina, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thornton, I. Mike and Dick have on right.
Car out all over again, just of a smaller scale.
Me, it's not, I don't. I, yeah, I I I understand what you're saying. I, if. To feel strongly about it, the need to totally look at the actual zoning, that entire parcel all the way to Western. It's not fair to have a whole bunch of B R zone parcels that we're never gonna use a business on. But and but again, you, I don't agree with that. That's that's a, see, you're you're making a strong argument and then just knocking it like, I'm never gonna, we're never gonna approve a business on these things. No, that's not true. It's just not. We're not gonna prove any business, right? I mean, I can do the same thing. You know, should we prove any business just because they are a business in in all those parcels? I mean, that's the same argument that you're making. You're saying that.
We're never gonna. I think we owe potential people one person in each parcel, some more guidance than on what we think is an appropriate business. If this one isn't. Then, I again, there's gotta.
I have no problem doing that, but I, to me. There's a fundamental choice as to whether. The design guidelines or how you wish to have College Highway book. In a long term vision, at any meeting at this time. Because I mean, at this point, you're going to just keep having College Highway, the district malls and and car dealerships.
But that's not what this application was, so that's a falsehood. And again, if it's. It's not carbon. This wasn't an outsized application for the parcel it was being put on. It's not a use that is abnormal. To the scale and character of the neighborhood past a thousand feet, you know, and I and I I. And I just people keep wanted.
I also don't recall a rigorous discussion about design guidelines either.
I I don't. We did, we did talk about it. We talked about putting the parking lot in the back, and that was rejected in hand. I mean, you guys and you guys disagree with that, and that's fine, but it was talked about.
So that's the only thing, I mean.
Yeah, I I mean, I I don't.
It's over and done. What's next on the list? What's next?
Uh, distribute that to the board.
Three, eight, and eleven.
But you don't hate for them.
So, and some of them are still still. That's okay, it is what it is. Then discreet about what my opinion is since they don't.
Absolutely.
I think. There are changes that you think would be. But I wish you just had a change that was impossible. Correct. That's what I was trying to figure out whether there was a any path. I don't think the size and character were consistent with that area. I don't.
Um, I I still have a loss, I think, of what you think would.
I mean, I could literally go.
A zone change position should occur. We should have a real conversation going forward about. What we're going to do, because these people are going to continue to come in here and complain about every single potential development, no matter what scale. No matter what size, no matter who is proposing it, and you just gave them fire for that claim going forward. If they wanna keep that open space, open space, they should put their money together and buy it. Instead of continuing to come forth before this board for the past fifteen, twenty years and stifling development.
But that's, I mean, let's start listening.
Folks, I would really like to move on to the next thing on the agenda, because absolutely nothing we can do about this, and I don't wanna talk about it all night.
No, that's fine. I just, you know, at some point, you're gonna have to tell me all these things that they knocked out, because I'm not familiar with all these things. Um, what's the three, eight, and eleven tall pines trail?
So. Uh, the Green Z subdivision. Is a flexible residential development, and as such, planning board. Gets to review individual lot plans. So these are, these are building department submitted plans. That's just the way it's written in uh bylaws. So traditionally, I would take these, review them for. Uh, conforming with setbacks and completeness of essential elements out there, uh water service, uh. Septic or sewage, um, building location, driveway, those kind of granted curbs, that's reviewed separately, but if I can give. A head. Let's see. Here we are. Uh, three tall pines, so this is a stamped plan. That's one of the requirements. This is stamped by the. E P over at Lebec Associates, same consultant that produced the subdivision plan.
Yeah.
Eventually, uh, the house footprint is shown. We have the septic locations on all their perks uh as well, um, and a driveway. Uh, to their drive garage right there. And that's generally speaking, what I look for. All right, other subdivisions may have infiltration elements related to the house uh or even driveway around it. This is adequate here. Guess what? Eight tall pines. You're gonna see something similar. Location, that's their buildable envelope, if you will. Um, they have a soul fence as well within that. There's their. Setback line right there, houses within it, same utility elements. Last one to bother with, uh, house number, like I'm not doing, still on the same cul-de-sac, similar features out there. For the purpose of, we'll call it review and acknowledgement, the new means, I think I'll are really interested in. And what's the next item? More soon. Yeah, I will, I will be sure to work those through the building permit system, uh noting everyone's reviews.
That's right.
My record. Thank you all. Uh, lots twenty-five, twenty-seven, I don't know, I'm gonna say, um, that's a non-issue. There was a confusion by title turning. What is held in the cabinet and move on is the E Green Z subdivision. My records were correct.
One in a row?
That's right.
Can you do one in a row twice?
Don't don't think I'm of that nature. But then my, what was the question? Oh, well, thank you very much. You've been very generous. Well, it brings us to a planning board member and staff comment.
Any member comments? Take the test.
Hey, any motions approved in minutes available left?
Yeah.
I would do my best. My, uh, I was grace grateful for some ridiculousness, but that's evaporated. And with all due respect to the board. It's difficult to fit in. That detailed administrative cap. It's a limited hours. I will, I will, at this point in time, I think I have. Some typing to do while expression I grow into my, so I'll try to hurry that up.
Your emotions, your, your.
Try make a motion to close the meeting.
Dave Spina, second. Olive's affair.
Aye, 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 aye.